This is a test.
Reverend Mulberry?
Yes, sir.
Would you say that, would you please rise and say the invitation, invocation, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Father, here we are again in your presence. We sit thank you for how you blessed us throughout the day. You brought us together once again to do the business of the city. And we pray God for your guidance, for your directions, and for your instructions. Touch our hearts and minds. Give us to make wise decisions in a time such as this. We give you praise and glory for all that you do. We thank you in advance. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Would you join in the Pledge Allegiance to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Grant, would you call, roll call, please?
Chairman Kilibr.
Here.
Vice Chairman Deloach. Mrs. Owens. Mrs. Rawls. Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Wallace. And Mrs. Wilson. All President and County Port Chair.
Thank you. The, we, after our last meeting, I had a con, I had a conversation with Mr. Holmes and I had asked that we kind of have some instruction and that's the reason we're doing what we're doing tonight, just so we can all get back on the same page with what we're doing, okay? I don't think there was any reason to read the attachment for the appeal. So with that said, we'll move on to the first part of this, which will be the planning board, board rules and definition per the Palaca Municipal Code, and Ms. Lisa's going to do that for us.
Now it's on. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Planning Board Members. This will be a brief presentation, hopefully under 10 minutes, on how to, how the planning board relates to the city's code of ordinances and the structure of a staff report in order to assist you with your recommendations and decisions. First, next slide, please. Article two, section 54 of the code establishes the planning board and defines its duties. The board is expected to consist of nine members with three-year terms, and members are not required to be a qualified elector of the city. Sections, next slide, please. Sections 54 dash 35 and 38 list matters to be referred to the planning board as the granting of utility franchises or privileges, the adoption of amendments to the comp plan, future land use and zoning map amendments, the adoption of an amendment to the zoning ordinance or plan, and the annexation of any property. Section, next slide, please. Section 54 dash 38 further broadly refers to the management of the comprehensive plan and amendments to it. So you guys are pretty familiar with all those terms, right? Thank you. Next slide, please. And as with most job descriptions, the code of ordinances includes other duties assigned to the planning board throughout different sections of the code. The board reviews subdivisions and plaits per section 74. Section 74, 7, 8, and 9 describe required information for the review of plat sketches, preliminary plaits and final plaits. Preliminary plaits have a list of 17 required items that we're to include with an application, while final plaits have a list of 12 required items. Only a final plat recommendation then goes before the city commission. Conditional uses, addressed in section 94 dash 3, are heard only by the planning board unless appealed. There's a list of 11 criteria or findings that are analyzed by staff and considered by the board. These criteria include compliance with the comprehensive plan, ingress and egress, parking and loading areas, utilities, screening and buffering, required yards, and general compatibility within the district. That's not a complete list, but you get the idea. All these criteria speak to the promotion of public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Next slide, please. Next are annexations, future land use changes and zonings as addressed in section 94 dash 38. Annexations utilize two criteria from the Florida statutes, compactness and contiguousness. The statutes require annexed properties to be in a single area and not create an enclave. So when you hear or read the report and you see where it says it does not create an enclave or it reduces an enclave, that's a really good thing according to the Florida statutes. The statutes require annexed parcels to be adjacent to existing municipal boundaries. If you guys are familiar with all that, that's contiguousness. Future land use map amendments look at three criterias found in the comp plan. These criteria include analysis of natural and historic resources, the minimum amount of land needed in the community, and whether the amendment promotes urban sprawl. Zonings have an extensive list of 17 criteria that include items such as existing land use pattern, isolated district creation or spot zoning, density, living conditions, effect on property values and future improvements, and scale. While effect on property values is a consideration, good planning practice is not based on investment-backed expectations. The last item on the other duties list is found in section ninety-four dash one ninety-five. It requests the planning board review and approve locations and setbacks for school and public bus shelters, bicycle racks, and telephone booths. And since I don't think I've ever seen a telephone booth here in town in the last three months, we probably ought to look at revising that section of the code soon. Okay, so Sunny, if you could pull up the staff report. I gave you all a copy of a recent conditional use application that you heard last month. And I'd just like to go over the structure. So on the first page, you're going to see what the request is. And then some background on the subject parcel. There can be a lot of things included in that, but it's usually a kind of a little bit of his historical uses, more recent historical uses. And then as you scroll down, you'll see how it relates to the conditional use requests and the requirements that are permitted within that zoning district. Sorry, the uses that are permitted, permitted within that zoning district. Then you'll also see the chart of surrounding properties and their existing uses, including their future land use and zoning designations. And then you'll see the analysis, which includes maps. There's a map of the subject parcel. And then a map of the future land use. The existing future land use. And the existing zoning. And those zoning and categories and land use categories are labeled because I'm not able to put in a legend on the map that we use on the software, okay? You scroll down a little farther, please. And then comes the analysis of all of the criteria that we're supposed to be looking at in these reports. Finally, we give a recommendation. And a recommendation can be used as a basis for your board discussion and any motions that might be made. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Um, I know the public comes here and they either agree with the change or they disagree with the change. And it can go either way with the vote of the board. Have you ever had any, like, neighboring neighbors that come in and say, I do not want this in my, because of this reason?
Yes.
Do you still make a recommendation then?
The recommendation that I make in the staff report is based on those criteria. A member of the public can come and give their input, feedback. But for you as a board, you should also be looking at those criteria that are listed in the staff report. That's what's in the zoning code, and that's what we are tasked with following. And again, we can, there are some effects on property values that we can be looking at. But I think that you should try to base those effects on data. Data and analysis. Because in good planning practice, we are not supposed to, as a planner, not supposed to make a decision based on investment-backed expectations. So by that, I mean, just because someone walked in and said, look, I just spent a hundred thousand dollars here. What do I get for that? Well, okay, what else are you supposed to be doing beyond, of course, we want you to prosper, we want you to be able to use your property, but we also need people to be good citizens and think about the benefit of the, to the whole community rather than just one person.
Pastor Mulberry's on the Zoom and we are broadcasting live on YouTube.
So.
And everybody, when you go to speak, if you would press your microphone like you normally would, we are in a meeting.
It's annoying, folks, I understand. That's why I asked, because I didn't want to have to go up here and press the button, but from my perspective, having advised boards for a long time, county level for a whole long time, and then here for a whole long time. The tendency sometimes is for people to think that a rezoning or a conditional use or special exception or variance is a popularity contest. I've had them in one context or another, actually called for a show of hands. How many are in favor of the audience, how many are against? And really, that's totally irrelevant. Now, sometimes in an effort to limit conversations, I represented Florida Rock when they tried to re, do some rezoning in West Putnam. We started at three or four in the afternoon and went till two the next morning in a planning board hearing. And sometimes in an effort to abbreviate the conversations, a speaker would speak and make points, and the chair would say, if there are people here in the audience who basically are here to make the same points, you can just raise your hand. And then you, if you still just have to speak, you can, but you know, we, we know that you're, you're on the same page if you just raise your hand. And that's, that's one thing, but just saying how many are in favor, how many against really is, is not relevant because the criteria we're to be looking at are those that are in our code. And I have asked Lisa, and we've talked about it in the future, kind of given you a little bit in the staff report of here's, here the criteria the code says you have to address in this particular matter. If staff wants to make a recommendation, then fine. If somebody has a conversation, they want to assert that is relevant to a particular point, of course, that's relevant, and they can even state opinions, you know? That's, that's fine, too. But in the end result, you are the ones, not staff, not me, you're the ones to look at the criteria and the information you have in front of you, and then you express your interpretation of what you've heard and what you see in your vote. And so, um, you know, a lot of zoning is emotion. A lot of land use decisions, especially of the property owners and the adjoining property owners, is based on emotion. I get it, it's human nature, but, but, but the code gives us the factors that you're supposed to be looking at as a matter of, for instance, consistency with a comp plan. That's, that's, that's a underlying ingredient to every rezoning decision. Is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Now, staff's going to have an opinion. Sometimes it's a pretty easy call. You know, you've got somebody that wants to do R1 and the competence says it's C2, you know, heavy commercial. Well, that's not consistent. That, that's kind of black and white, but sometimes it's more vague, like it's a recreational agricultural use. And you know, the, that's been given some special considerations by our legislature. And so you may think it is, staff may think it's not. You're entitled to vote your conscience and what, you know, your interpretation, that's, that's what you're here for. As long as you're not just flatly throwing out the facts and the code. Like if you think that it's consistent and it's R1 in C2 or heavy commercial comp plan, well, that's, you can't interpret that far. I mean, you don't have that much, that much latitude, but you know, I think that's the key. And when you take something up for, on appeal, and I have on multiple occasions gone to the appellate courts with decisions. You know, the key is based upon the record that's generated and the conversation and the motion and what you state as a basis for your motion. You know, does the, can the appellate court look at what you've done and see that, that you are following the, the law? Um, that's one of the, one of the major facts you're going to deal with when you get to the appellate court. And, and if it's just a matter of vote, you know, of saying, well, there are a lot of people here who are against it. So I'm, I'm against it. That ain't going to hold, not if somebody actually takes it. Now, we've been fortunate in Putnam County for a long time in that fortunate, unfortunate, call it what you want to. But we didn't, we have not had in the past, a lot of cases go to appeal because our property values were lower. A lot of times the projects were not of huge value. And so a lot of times, if you got an adverse decision, people just live with it. But that's changing. People are more and more interested, they're more, the value is higher and higher, the projects are bigger and bigger. And so it's really important that we keep a touchstone on, on what, what our code is and what the facts are. And we avoid saying things that are patently not going to be, going to be deemed relevant factors if an appellate court looks at what you've done.
See, my, my issue. My issue was, like, for instance, the example that I'm thinking of right now is when we had a guy come in, property owner come in, and you had, I think it was two neighbors in here, and then a letter that was written in about a daycare going in, and right next door, there was drug activity. It wasn't a once or twice, it was over forty incidences. And us as a board, as, you know, business owners, residents of Putnam County and the city of Palaca, you know, and, and people that are trying to make decisions based on the better of the city for the safety, for everything, I just didn't feel like that daycare was an appropriate place, you know, I didn't think that was an appropriate place for a daycare. Um. The city knew about it, the, the, you know, and it was still recommended to us as, oh, this is a good idea because of this, because of all of these, you know, things. But it really wasn't a good fit. And then it goes to the city. It got passed here, not because of me, but it goes to the city, and the commissioners didn't think it was a good idea either because there was people that came there and said, look, I'm neighboring, I live across the street, I live down the street. And, and they all said, you know, the same thing that I was saying, and you know, there was, I got a lot of phone calls after that meeting, and it wasn't, you know, some were not happy with me saying no, you know? And some were happy that I said no, but it was just kind of like, you know, I'm fine with the phone calls and I'm fine with making that decision, but how do you, how do you break that emotion away because you had people here saying?
So from my perspective, if I'd been taken that to court, I would have looked at that as a condition that was remedial, that could be remedied. And not a characteristic that was inherent with the land or the circumstances. For instance, if you're talking about that daycare on a six-lane highway with unlimited access and traffic and all that stuff being, you know, just a huge issue, that's a characteristic that you're not going to change with enforcement. That's part of the, the adjoining property, the characteristics of the land, a problem. But the allegations, as I recall, without getting to a different case, let me not go into that specific case, but an allegation of someone violating the law nearby or, you know, someone having property that's not up to code or something like that, from my perspective, that's an enforcement matter. That, that should be remedied, and that should be something that's dealt with. Now, I think that issue, I don't, there was some extenuating circumstances at the county, at the city level, weren't there? Or if there's some things that came up that, um, it's either withdrew it or there was an issue with. Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. My recollection was there were some issues with her modifying the building. Modifying the building and not being able to meet, uh, right the code, but.
Same question, too, because that was, I was thinking the exact same example is, so how do we make a decision in terms of, okay, you know, maybe like a safety concern, right? Because that was like with the, maybe like a neighbor next door. How do we make sure that we, I guess, are making the right decision in terms of when someone has like a safety concern with everything that's around or versus?
I think that's a legitimate issue. For instance, um, let's say it's a one-way road that goes to your property that's at issue, that's at the end. It's a residential area, and they're wanting to put a recreational use in that's going to have high-volume traffic on a one-way road. Well, that's, that's a legitimate concern. It's a one, one-lane or two-lane, one-way road, dead-end road that leads to the property through a residential area, and the property's going to have, it may be res, it may be recreational, but it's going to be high-use. Then, then that's, that's a legitimate issue that I think has to do with the characteristics of the, the land. It may even be consistent with the comp plan because of where it is. But if the roadway going in is a problem, big-time problem, then, um, then that's, um, that in my opinion is justification for, you know, for legal justification for saying no to it. But I'm never going to criticize, I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm not going to criticize, I'm not criticizing your voting your conscience based upon your good faith assessment of, and your, your feelings about what you see, except that I will say that I'm just going to ask you, and that's why I asked Lisa if we could put the criteria in the book and you, in the, and look at those criteria, you know, if you find something in there that you can peg your emotions to and use that as the basis of your motion, then at least it gives us something to work with.
We used to always. I don't think we had to do that. I'm talking about years past. I don't believe we had to do that, but we all did.
Yep.
If you voted contrary, and the planner has to do the same thing.
Yep.
If you vote contrary to something, one of these articles in that analysis there, and this is not going to, nobody's here with us.
Got Zoom, I mean YouTube land, I don't know who's on YouTube.
You, you, it doesn't take much of that. I think one of these, yeah. Like, I think I brought up safety issue because somebody said something about that intersection being so close to Creel. That's a legitimate reason to turn it down, you know?
Well, and see, to me, the safety issue would be, you know, her sister coming and dropping off the kids at that daycare. She's not part of the business, she's not a part of the, a part of the, the owner of the building. She wasn't, she's not a part, she's innocent bystander taking her kids to an overnight daycare because she's a nurse and she works at night. So something happens at night. Yeah, but something happens at night, yeah. To me, it was a public safety issue. It was more public of the people that were going to be utilizing that business. I just didn't think with all of the concerns of the surrounding property owners that lived there twenty-four seven.
Well, well, we're going to try to modify our staff report so that, I agree, Earl, that's what we did for a long, long time when I by the planning commission, um, was, um, and what we tried to do over the years, and you know, we went through a number of different planning directors, but what we tried to do was say, here's the criteria, staff recommends denial based upon criteria A, B, C. And then the conversation would take place, and then it was apparent that the committee, the board did not agree with staff's recommendation. Then either the planning director or myself would say, well, I tell you what, Earl, if you're going to vote against that billboard, which we all know you would, um, then staff would suggest that you look at criteria D as being one that you might say under the circumstances applies, remember? And then your motion would be, you know, denied based upon failure to meet criteria D. At least then, if we have to go up, you know, I've got something in the record that says he tied his motion to defeat based upon one of the criteria that's specifically referenced in our code. Yes, sir.
Is staff able to also provide a loosely recommended verbiage for the motion, so that way our motions are more accurate moving forward?
Um, you know, we can. I mean, I, I drafted what they call the Holmes motion for the code enforcement board, which they actually hand out, and we can do that same thing for you guys. It hell, it'll have blanks in it, i.e., um, and, and we can put a couple of variations together, but it can be something effective. I move to approve case number blank, blank, blank upon the grounds that I find it meets the criteria, you know, in our code for the granting of a rezoning. Boom. Um, that's all you really need in a motion to approve, but if it's to deny, you could say, uh, I, uh.
The county has something very similar to that where it says approve or deny, slash approve, deny, variant, so-and-so, because of.
Yeah, and, yeah. Well, that's been pretty consistent. I represented them for seventeen years, they're, but they're boards, and, um, and as I said, you go up to the appellate courts a few times and you pretty quickly understand what you need for amending if you're going to win. I mean, uh, when Norfolk Southern wanted to put a lodge over here on, uh, Moreton Point, I represented the property owners on that roadway going to, to the point against Norfolk Southern, and we won. Then we went to appeal, and I won there. And then they, the Norfolk Southern hired me to get. And then they, Norfolk Southern hired me to get the, um, lodge approved. And because of conflict reasons, I wouldn't do it unless my former clients agreed. But they trusted me to negotiate terms that would eliminate their concerns. That's why you have the separate entrance going into the Norfolk Southern Lodge and it doesn't go down that Moreton Point Road. And with that, we got approval and, um, but going up to the appellate courts with a couple of law firms on the other side, because Norfolk Southern, they have, uh, they have resources. Um, but going, going up to the appellate courts, you know, you, you, you learn quickly what your record, what your record needs to have in order to, for you to win the case. And that touchstone to your code is just critical. You can disagree, you can have a different interpretation, you can, any of y'all can, then staff on a point. But as long as you've got something to, you know, that, to base that interpretation upon, I, I think you're pretty good. It's where you're totally a field, you know, you're not even, you're not referencing this, you know, you're, you're totally a field. Uh, that's where you're just, you're, you're setting us up for a problem, setting yourselves up for a problem. So that's why I think it's real, real important to look at those criteria. And then, you know, you can have your own interpretation. I think that's part of what makes this, you know, uh, that's why you have a board, otherwise you just have a machine that spits out a response. But that's what we're going to try to do for your help in the future. And the same thing goes on to, um, conditional uses, except that you have more latitude there because you can impose conditions. You can't on zonings, as you know, you can't have conditional zoning, but you can't have conditional uses with how specific certain conditions that have to be met. Um, and we'll try to, you know, we'll try to guide you some through that as you, as we move forward. It wasn't one taste, it was just, you know, uh, listening and watching.
Put me on the board, it was when they put me on.
Last, that was last week or last month, first time we had that many.
That was a lot.
It was a lot.
And we, I think we discussed, I think it was a good discussion. I think that, I think I felt good about all the citizens. The only line I didn't feel good about was that.
Well, we used to do this, Earl, periodically, once a year or so, even, and at the county level too, you know, periodically, we just have a little brief session to put everybody, because the board changes, people get appointed, they leave, and it just was helpful. Well, you know, it's, it wasn't really intended as an admonishment of anybody. It's just, we, I, I mean, I hadn't done it for a long time as city attorney. And, um, you know, I get, I think Ed had, had brought up, uh, a need for us to talk about.
Yes.
The meeting, uh, how the meetings were being run. And so it was just a good time for us to talk about it all. Lisa thought it was a good idea, so it's not, it wasn't intended as critical, to be critical of anybody at all, really wasn't, truly.
And Don.
One thing that I learned is you have to make myself, you gotta write by, you gotta. Yeah. Yeah, you gotta do your homework.
Well, I think, I think with that particular case Dawn's talking about, if I remember right, afterwards, that, um, I was told that the, 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 what they were bringing up about a man being there was not true. Um, the, the, the guy that they were talking about worried about doing drugs and stuff, I'm not saying the drugs weren't there or anything like that. But they kept going back to one particular person. And then later on, I come to find out that it, that wasn't a true statement.
And you know, you don't operate in here on a strict rule of evidence basis. But on the other hand, if, if I'm on the other side and that kind of stuff's coming up, my question is just basic credibility, you're taking people's word that they see something, you don't know how often, there's nothing documented. So, and we don't know if he's going to be back tomorrow, uh, and so we're, we're making a land use decision, which theoretically it, it, it spans the future, future owners, et cetera, et cetera. We're making a land use decision on the, on the allegation that somebody who's been in trouble with the law frequents a house that he doesn't own in close proximity. If I'm on the other side of that, that gives me a lot of ammunition, you know what I'm saying?
But it was, it was the temporary staff that we had that brought up at the end of the, uh, towards the end of the meeting before we voted. He said, well, I did get a police report and there's over forty incidences. And I was like, why wasn't that, why is this an issue? In my opinion, I thought that that should have been, you know, I would have, I would have just, I, I would have, I, I lost it there. That's where you lost me completely, but I'm only one vote, so.
Drug, like, for me, that's all the stuff. He could have been killed the next morning and doing a drug deal.
Well, well, let me ask you a question, if I own property and, and, and it's in the right area in terms of comprehensive plan says this is, this property should be C one, and I've got a C one use. And I've got land rights, just like everybody else does, and I come and ask for approval of something and you say, yeah, but your neighbor three doors down is a bad person. And so that, he's a bad person, because of that, we're not going to let you have your, your land use that you're speaking. From my perspective, that's a problem, because if that person's a bad person, then the cops ought to be taking care of it. And he should be, he shouldn't be a problem to my property. If it's an enforcement issue, that's not, that's nothing I can control. And so that's why I say, if it's, if I've decided I wanted to put, you know, a, um, you know, a, a whatever, a daycare on, in a, in a high traffic area with unguarded cross sections and thirty-eight accidents in the last year, okay. That's something that's, that's a layer, that's a characteristic of the land. But the fact that somebody's frequenting a house a few doors down, if I'm on the other side of that, I, I would have taken a lot of exception of that. I think the appellate courts would have too.
I can see that. The other issue is, um, Dollar General we approved as a retail store.
Yes, ma'am.
The one right next to family dollar on Creel.
Well, see, okay, so let me address that.
What, at what point does the city of Palaca say, no more?
At what point does the city of Palaca have the authority to say, we don't want any more contractors in town? We got enough, don't, we're not approving any more, any more buildings for contractors. Got enough drug stores, no more drug stores. At what point do we create, we, do we basically, uh, basically restrain trade and competition by saying you can't do anymore? And that's, I, and I apologize, but I was raised, thinking free market society was the way to go. I mean, if, 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 if the, if the market will support it, and I've got the money to put something there that people want, why shouldn't I be able to do it if I'm in the right place? So from my perspective on dollars, whatever, I get them confused.
Dollar General.
Dollar Dollar. Whatever, they're coming in, taking a iceboard, wiping it off, putting a one and a half million dollar structure or whatever on the tax rolls there. If they're going to do that, then, uh, and they want to invest in Putnam County. And in its, in its commercial area, why should I say, no, we got enough?
But forgive me.
Well, in the same instance with that, when that particular thing, what you're talking about, Dawn, and I understand what you're saying, but, and everybody's in an uproar about it. Everybody's condemning the planning board for approving that. But the same instance, there's only three of them in Palaca. And in the same instance, Palaca is a food desert.
And the other instance is, if people say, well, there's one two doors down, and I'm saying, okay, if I build a better gas station here, what normally happens to the other gas station? Just saying.
But forgive me, I thought that that was going to move in either, if I'm remembering right. I thought that was going to move in either way, we were only voting if it could connect to city water or not, I thought. Am I remembering that right?
Think I'll vote on annexation.
Yeah, we had to.
I didn't, I thought that, I thought it was going to be a family dollar no matter what, was it?
Take it in, and then if it comes in, what does it go in as?
And they, if they weren't, they, if, in the beginning, they weren't telling us what they wanted to do there.
And see, that's another interesting point. Academically, if the, you, you shouldn't have to tell you what the use is.
I understand.
In a pure, in a pure world.
Retail store, and I think, you did ask, because I was like, it was over here, and I, but it was, and I was like, she didn't, and then she, when she said Dawn, I was like, oh.
Right, she wasn't, she wasn't going to tell us.
But think about it this way for a minute.
I just want other retail stores.
It's irrelevant.
That one and the previous, so that's two in the city of Palaca. They sat up here, it was kind of like the, um, the gambling fish stores, you know, uh, it's just. Remember that? Oh, it's just like, well, both of the dollar stores said, oh, no, we're gonna, we're gonna preserve those trees.
I knew that was coming.
But I do.
Chairman.
They, they said it, and they never even.
Mr. Wallace, would you turn your mic on, please? Turn your mic on.
Just leave it on.
They, they, they said that they were, don't, don't shake your head at me. They said that they were gonna take care of the trees, you know? And neither, neither site did they adhere, in my opinion, to our landscape ordinance.
But that's got nothing to do with zoning.
Well, was that, was that a zoning?
That was a annexation, zoning and land use, comprehensive plan. So my point is, what if I don't have a use for the property? What if I'm taking a piece of property at a busy intersection that's purely commercial, and I want to bring it in the city? And I won't, I won't, uh, commercial zoning, and I say, I don't know what I'm going to do with it, but it's going to be commercial.
I'm all with it, because, uh, I was thinking both of them were conditional uses.
No, 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 that wasn't a condition.
But in, in any case, all right, uh, I don't have a leg to stand on, but where do I bring them to task to follow the city ordinance?
Code enforcement, I mean, that's a code enforcement matter.
You know, the trees are gone.
Well.
I mean, and they cut down what, what, when we did our landscape ordinance, those trees were termed heritage trees.
Which trees are you talking about now? You're about on.
He's on Main Street.
And over there at the intersection, Palm and.
Intersection two.
Palm and Creel.
I didn't remember that big oak's there, but.
Yeah, and, and big cedar tree. And so, and I, I'll bet you, it's, it's like the guy up here at the corner of Ninth and Reed Street. The, the little liquor store. All right, he was gonna landscape that place, he was gonna meet, and that was a conditional use. He was gonna meet all of the landscape ordinance requirements, he was gonna do wonders. He went out there and he cut, I think there's six, six little one by one holes in the, in the concrete and put a bromeliad in the bright sun that's supposed to be in the shade to live, and that was it. And then they were gone after three days and, but we're still sitting here and he's still up there and.
Earl, we need to start you into the business, Earl's lawn service.
No, I, I'm not for, I'm not, you know.
No, I'm going to make Earl the code enforcement officer.
Speaking of trees and speaking of a sample here, they did cut that down, did you see that by the?
Finally.
The wax, you could see there's a stop sign there.
What, what are y'all talking about?
They cleaned that, they cleaned that whole place up.
So Earl, that would be a code enforcement issue, it would also be a failure to comply with a conditional use. It is enforceable, uh, but somebody had to make a complaint and, you know, we're coming up to speed on our code enforcement.
Which we, we wasted our ink printing codes because we haven't been very good at enforcing codes.
Well.
The police department, at one time, if, if you call somebody about a code enforcement, don't, don't shrug like that on the slip. If you call somebody about a code enforcement issue, they referred you to the police department. And when you called the police department, they laughed at you and says, we got drug addicts, we're trying to pick up, we don't care about.
That's why I took code enforcement from the police department and brought it back down here, I, and put it across the street. And, you know, we are doing things, we, we, because of the, everything's blamed on COVID, I know, but uh, we could not get any code enforcement officer in school from last May until September. We just got our code enforcement people back two weeks ago, first school we could get them in, everybody shut down. So we, we have two now that are code enforcement certified. We've been having a hearing almost every month, we've missed one month, I think. And we've, and we've gotten a lot of cases in compliance, and then we've taken, um, cases to the special magistrate, an average of six per month. Gotten a lot of, you know, fines and other things, uh, in place that will let us go forward with foreclosures, which we're going to do six months after the fines start if we can't get compliance. So, but you gotta, you know, you, you can't go from zero to a hundred.
I know that. I'm a very practical person.
What I've always said about you, Earl.
Mr. Holmes, I think you need to mark that down, you missed your chance. Mr. Wallace said you were right, you did good.
Oh, I've told him he was right before.
I've never heard. I understand, I'm just saying. I've, I've never heard it. Do we have any more questions or any, or anything?
Well, I will say that the Dollar General store owns Family Dollar, so they're moving in next to.
No, you're, you're, you're wrong on that, George, uh, I found that out too, I've thought that for years. I'm not, I'm not, I'm.
The same mother company has both of them, it's not under Dollar General, but the same other company.
Dollar, uh, the Dollar Store out in the Publix Plaza.
Dollar Tree.
Dollar Tree. That corporation owns Family Dollar, Dollar General is on its own.
Yeah, that's, that's the green, I, I don't.
Because I used to say that all the time.
The one out by Publix, that's the green.
Right.
And then the one that is the fastest corporate, or it was eight months, two year ago, the fastest growing corporation in the country was Dollar General.
Right.
And then the other one, which they got all a flash of color.
Right, that's Family Dollar. Family Dollar.
Family Dollar, yeah.
Okay, well, if we don't have, let's move, let's move along, I've got places to go tonight, people.
I guess I've got Robert's Rules of Order, I'll be brief with this. There's a lot of information in Sunny's, uh, in Sunny's presentation here, but I'm not sure that some of it really isn't Robert's Rules of Order. A lot of people think Robert's Rules of Order is a law, it's not. Um, and our ordinances, our code of ordinances specify that Robert's Rules of Order will be used at the city commission level. It doesn't specify anything about other commissions, but you got to have some way of making, of keeping order. So it's kind of something you can revert to. Don't ever hear about it in law school, people think, because you go to law school, you know about Robert's Rules of Order? Trust me, it's never mentioned in law school, and that's not what you're worried about. But I downloaded a copy and it's on my phone, you can just go to Google and, and look at Robert's Rules of Order and, um, and I put it in my book section and it's free and you can, you know, you got a table of contents and it's, uh, we got wifi internet in here. You can look it up anytime you want to, if there's something that comes up. But the main thing is, under, in, in any procedure that you adopt, and Robert's Rules of Order is, it's good because it gives you a way of breaking the top. There's just some basics, you know, that you need to do to keep in touch with in order to make the meeting run. Um, one, have a motion, two, have a second, three, have discussion, four, don't have more than one person talk at the same time. And then five, you go to a vote. Now, there are some rules that come into play when, um, you know, you have specific topics like, let's say you want to reconsider a motion. You know, what, what's the rule of that? It's easy, it's, you can look it up, it's pretty easy, someone from the winning party has to make the motion for reconsideration. It has to be done during the same meeting, under most Robert's Rules of Orders provisions, and then, you know, it has to be a positive vote. Um, but, but the key being, someone from the losing party can't bring it up for reconsideration, it's got to be someone from the winning side. The audience, you know, that's, that's something that's just, sometimes it's difficult to control. But, you know, well, the biggest problem you, you may have on an emotional issue is people talking out here, not talking to y'all. Uh, people not respecting the, um, the conversation of someone who's presenting, people applauding and catcalling when someone's saying something they like or don't like, that's the kind of stuff that can get out of hand in a heartbeat. And that's where the chairman has to come in hand and come in, you know, come in, uh, in strong and just say, we're going to talk one at a time. We're going to be respectful of what the person that's there is saying, you may not like it, but you know, you, they let you talk, you let them talk. And then, you know, it, it, it goes from there, so.
One of the biggest corrections, I think, that, that are made, tell them to speak to the board and not, because they'll turn around and.
Argue with each other.
Argue with each other, and it's both this.
Um, so there was anything specific in Robert's Rules of Order that you wanted to, to talk about?
I mean, just mainly the, 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 you know. I mean, just mainly the, 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 you know, record, being recognized, um, you know, to speak. And that's, there's, there's a lot of issues with that. Um, and that's not just general one person. You know, we just need to, we need to have the chairman recognize us just for the fact that. You're speaking, uh, nobody else is speaking at that point. And then, you know, when you, when you're quiet, then another person gets the chair to recognize them.
And that has practical, uh, there's a practical reason for that as well because at some point, somebody may end up transcribing one of your hearings. And if two people are talking at the same time, you may not get a clear record of what was being said by any one person. So that's why courts are strict on not having more than one person talk at, at the same time. So, you know, but that's again, is gonna be for the chair to, you know, to politely but firmly enforce is, be recognized by the chair before you speak.
And I think a lot of the issue is, is we are so informal and, and so, and, and we're all friends with each other. You know, we all know each other, so it's not, I mean, we're not thinking about it when we do it. But sometime, and I'm, I'm guilty of it. I'm probably the world's worst at talking over somebody. And you, you think you are. Yeah, so, you know, I mean, I just, I just, I mean, you know, if we just get, if we can be recognized by the chair, it causes a lot less confusion. For, you know, as, as it's being recorded, it's being transcribed, like you said, um, the people in the, in the audience, that they see that, they see us doing that to each other. They're more apt to jump up from the chair and do the things that you're talking about.
Absolutely. Biggest, when it's, when it's emotional, that's when, that's when you have a problem. When, when there's something emotional before the.
Right.
Before the board or as I said, land's always emotional. Um, you know, uh, what's the old saying? People will kill you over a dollar, a kid or land. And, um, that's, I don't know, now it's like you get killed over fifteen cents too, but. Back in the day, at least, those were the topics that you thought of most were, you know, kids. Pets and, and land, but, um, that's when it's really important that you keep order from the back, from the outset, because if one side gets away with stuff. The other side thinks that they got a right to have, you know, a counter. So, um, and I've seen them. Throw people out of hearings and if you're gonna have a hearing that you think's gonna be real controversial, like when we had the debates about the, um. Adult entertainment stores. I mean, you, you, they needed to keep control of that from the first minute of it. So that you didn't have stuff going totally out of, out of, off the, off the rail.
Mr. Wallace, you had a question? I'm recognizing you.
I was just gonna say, I'm not rude. I'm just passionate.
Yes, um, obviously the purpose of the board is to make the decisions and judgments, but if we come to a motion. That we're not confident in one way or another, for whatever reason. As a board member, am I allowed to not cast a vote?
Not according to, uh, I don't know if Robert specifically covers it, but. The, the rule is that unless you have a reason for abstention or abstaining, um, that, you know, is based upon conflict. Which you articulate and ultimately confirm in writing, you're supposed to cast a vote.
So if, sorry, if, if something gets brought up in the meeting, something maybe I hadn't considered and I wanted to look into it more to confirm it accurate or not. Cause it's a big swaying factor to my decision. How do I proceed with that? Ask it to be tabled?
You can, sure. You can ask.
Yes.
That kind of brought that up about the other day. We had it to where there was a issue that we didn't, nobody did anything. Say the motion died for lack of a second.
Oh, or, yeah, or.
For lack of motion.
Lack of motion.
Or, okay, wasn't a motion then.
That's a decision.
That's, yeah, that's a decision.
Yeah, that's a definite decision.
From the planning commission standpoint, non-action oil or, or a, a, uh, tie vote goes up as a recommendation of denial. Even a tie vote. I was gonna look at, um.
Eddie just brought.
Motion to table maybe one of those motions that doesn't require a second.
Eddie brought up a deal just, uh.
We've always had.
Where you rode past the property and looked at it, probably two chairmans ago. He advised us not to go past any property, don't, you know, uh, because you'll run into a neighbor. That's gonna have an opinion and so forth. And so where I used to stop and look at some properties, I do ride past the properties, look, but I do not stop. But, uh, his deal was you may run into a neighbor that has an opinion and then you're.
Well, not even the chairman. It was the, um, finding director that told us, if you remember. And it told us not to.
And here's the thing, and that really boils down to more of a sunshine law or, or a public meeting issue. The whole theory of a hearing is that you hear, hear what you base your decision upon. So that the, those in favor of it and against know what you're relying upon and making your decision. I mean, just fundamentally, that's what it's all supposed to be about. You, you come in this room just like a judge and you hear in this room. The, the circumstances upon which you base your decision so that if I'm against it, I know what you're hearing. I can object to it or try to counter it. And if I'm in favor of it, I know what you're hearing and I don't get. Somehow sabotaged by something that you heard that I have no ability to, to contradict. So. Just, uh, the easy instance, you go out and look at the wrong property by mistake. It can happen. And you come in here and you don't tell anybody what you saw that you didn't like, but that's in your mind. You vote against it. And I'm in fact, and I'm the opponent, I'm the, I'm the applicant and I have no way of saying, no, Ed, you looked at the wrong piece of property. Mine's one across the street that had big oak trees to be taken down. Pardon me, Earl. But, so, so.
I'm trying to just be passionate, not rude, but you're making it hard.
We were, we were friends when we walked in, Earl. It's okay. We'll look down.
So in its purest form, if I had, if I, in its purest form, I would say you didn't know anything about the case until you walk in the door. But let's face it, in a small community, that's not practical. So all I ask is that if you're gonna. Go by and look at property and know, and what we used to do when I represented the board was I would have a show of hands. How many people have gone out and looked at property? And, you know, one or two, you know, would raise their hands and at least if I'm the, either side, I know you've gonna look at something. And, you know, it, it helps. And then the next question is, did you talk to anybody while you were there? Um, cause you might run into the applicant and he might show you all about what he plans to do, but nobody but you knows. If I'm on the other side, I wanna know that because he's told you something. I don't get to say, no, he can't do that. He doesn't, he doesn't have the ability to do that, you know, he's. So, so the only thing that I would ask is that you make it known to when looked and you make it known that if you, when you looked, you talked to anybody. And of course, the safest thing is don't talk to anybody and just say, I'm sorry, I'm just here to look. Can't talk to you. Then you got nothing to say, but I didn't talk to anybody.
You answered my question.
That's the ex parte you also have, uh, your ask about, did, you know, did you talk to anybody? You don't have to talk to anybody about the case outside of these walls. You don't have to. You're not an elected official. You don't have constituents who have a right to talk to you. You don't have to. But if you choose to, I, I would not tell you that you can't. I don't think I have that power. But if you choose to understand that you're gonna be asked, did you talk to anybody about this case before today? And if you say yes, then you're supposed to state the substance of your conversation. Now, I'm on the other side. I'm gonna wanna know. Well, tell me more, Ms. Rawls. What did, what did you talk to Earl about? You know, did he give you that whole sob story about billboards being a blight on the city of Palaca and. Blocking traffic and causing people to run off the road and hit trees and things, heritage jokes.
Trees, heritage jokes.
Did he do that? And then if you say yes, I'll be. Uh, so that's why I tell people, you can do it, but just understand you're gonna be asked about the conversation when you come here. And that's, that's required.
Well, yeah, and the other day was, okay, whole Main Street and Twenty First.
Yeah.
That sign, that was so confusing. If it wouldn't have been the alleyway behind the old pick and save, running along that fifth before the railroad bed, okay, that was. And even the driveway wanted to.
Did you have a diagram? I didn't, I wasn't.
It was back, there were back.
But Lisa, but Lisa, in, 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 in defense of her, in doing the things that she was doing, she wasn't here when Pick and Save was here. You know, she. As far as, as far as.
Yeah. And for me, it was, it was your questions and then it was his comments and then it was his questions. And then I'm putting all this information together because I know I drove by, didn't get out of my car, drove by and saw, and I thought. I'm totally fine with all this. I didn't realize all of the properties behind it and having the discussion.
Everything, but I tried to explain.
No, but that was a big deal because I went from one end to the other and that was good.
You still remember that?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
But I tried to explain what Twenty First Street was, what Main Street was.
And you're.
People have a, they, they don't grasp that the street can go right on out through the woods and across the canal and the ditch and everything you got there. But it's still public right of way. It's just not open. And just open.
And your explanation of, of the way that that road, if it was to come open again, if the, that the property owner, there's some property owners in there. That could not get to their property. If that road came open again, made the most sense out of everything.
Yeah.
See, they, they could have gotten to their property, but it was not the most beneficial route to them.
What else?
To Madison. If you got a business in there, you wanna get to Reed Street with the trucks and get right on out of town. You don't wanna go wiggling around bike path out there somewhere.
Right.
No, cause when you chop down those trees, you gotta get right to Reed Street and get out of town before Earl sees you.
Trees are all down.
You mean those hared bushes that are out there?
Yes.
I didn't say it. Not my fault. I don't have that. I don't have that at all.
All right, is everybody, are we good with Robert's Rules of Order?
Maybe we are, but when it gets emotional, I'm not claiming anything.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Is there anything else that we, that Mr. Holmes can ask, answer for us right now?
Well, I would like to have that, like you were fixing to make the motion.
Right.
We'll do that. We'll do that for you. And that's good for the record too.
If you, even if you could just put a laminated, Sunny, if you could just put a laminated sheet. At everyone with those rules like that or that, a, 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 a motion in that, how we could just.
To table a motion, to approve a motion, to deny.
And if we could have those laminated and sitting at our seats. So that when, when, you know, the, one of the board members decides to make that motion or make that decision, they can pick that up and read it, you know, and, I mean, cause. At points, you know, when you, when you, when you first get on a board, like, you know, like some of us, when you, you get nervous. And you start stumbling and that's just not human nature, but it gives you, it'd give you a little bit more, um. Confidence, thank you, in, in what you're doing.
Sure. You have in the beginning what the person is asking for. It's spelled out for us in the beginning of our staff report. So you just, you take that, I move that, you can read it verbatim down there. And I always throw in at the end the staff's recommendations because otherwise, they're not in there.
But Earl, you've been doing this for a hundred years. You've been doing this for a hundred years.
Only ninety-nine.
I'll leave on that note.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Thank you. Yeah, they're doing that. Sunny's doing that part of it. It's a big time, Richie, six minutes. Let's go.
All right, we're trying to be as fast as we can. Hi, that's, um, I'm Sunny. I'm the acting city clerk of the city of Palaca. Um, ironically, I've been chosen to present to you the sunshine law. No pun intended, right? Um, we're gonna try to go through these slides kinda quickly. Um, I would recommend, um, that this PowerPoint can be downloaded from the state of Florida's website. This was a PowerPoint that was created by attorney general Ashley Moody. Next slide, please. I could say that while. It's there, a down button. Voila. All right, Florida's government sunshine law provides a right of access to government proceedings at both the state and the local level. So it includes the planning board. In an absence of a statutory exemption, it applies to any gathering of two or more members of the same board to discuss the matter, which will foreseeably come before that board for an action. Um, Lynn Tipton, a lecturer for the Florida League of Cities, says where two or more board members are gathered, there are the sunshine laws in the midst. So that's a great thing to kinda keep in mind. The scope of the sunshine law includes anything. That's discussed in private discussions with each other about board business, either in person or by telephoning, emailing, texting, or any other electronic communication. When Mr. Holmes was saying, you know, if you speak to someone about it, if it's put in writing, it's been governed by the sunshine law. Someone can ask you for your. Pull a public records request for your text messages about that case, for any emails you may have sent about that case, anything is, it's under the sunshine law. Next slide, please.
Real quick, Sunny, just for clarity, that's only amongst board members, correct?
If you were to text someone about a case, a per, private person, it's governed by the sunshine law.
If you put it in writing, because.
It's in writing.
I texted to Joe and Joe can be friends with Ed and he could say, oh, look what happened. Don said.
Hmm, okay.
You're, if you're using, if, if you're using your personal device for anything at any time. As a board member, it can be subpoenaed into, um, testimony or asked for, you know, if you're using your. You know, that's another thing, Sunny. I don't know if there's any way that we might be able to get, um, personal, um, or not personal, but city. Email addresses for board members. So that if somebody decides that they wanna email us or something like that, instead of it going into our personal email accounts, because that would also be. We, they would take our personal email and, and use it for that also. They would subpoena our whole thing. And if we're. Talking to somebody we shouldn't be over here about something totally different, you know, I'm not, I'm saying that I do that. I'm just, you know, anything. It, it, they can take your whole email account, put it into, into public record.
I'd, I'd be glad to ask the city manager. I know in the past why the planning board wasn't given, um, city email addresses is because. You're not required to respond to that. And I don't think anyone wanted to make you guys feel like you're required to respond to a member of the public about a planning board matter. You're not required to do so. You can, like Mr. Holmes was saying a minute ago, you can tell them I have no comment.
Right.
Best thing, if you're not in this room, don't.
So that's why it's not been.
Fine, I'm just making that.
And one of the planners or managers or something. I've got emails where just you asking if we're gonna be there. And they reply all, we were told at one point, never reply all because that's a violation of the government sunshine.
Right.
Correct. Yeah, never, never reply all to another board member because it, it is technically considered a violation. Um, next slide, please. Next slide, please. There are three basic requirements of the sunshine law. Meetings of public boards or commissions must be open to the public. Reasonable notice of such meetings must be provided and the minutes of meetings must be prepared and open to public for inspection. Next slide, please. Scope of the sunshine law. The sunshine law applies to advisory boards created pursuant to law ordinance and otherwise established by public agendas or officials. Next slide, please. Staff meetings are not normally subject to the sunshine law. However, staff committees may be subject to sunshine law if they're deemed to be a part of the decision-making pro- process. Next slide, please. The scope of the sunshine law, only the legislature may create an exemption from the sunshine law. And there's a little bit more information there about, about how exemptions are passed by the legislature. Next slide, please. Boards may adopt reasonable rules and policies to ensure orderly conduct of the meeting. The sunshine law does not allow boards to ban non-disruptive videotaping, tape recording, or photography at public meetings. And that's talk, kinda echoes some of the things Mr. Holmes was saying a little while ago, that if you choose to adopt Robert's Rules of Order. It's fine to maintain an orderly conduct, but as long as the public's maintaining orderly conduct, they have every right to witness, view the meeting. Next slide, please. Section twenty, two hundred and eighty-six point oh, one, one, four of the Florida statutes provide subject to listic exceptions. That boards must allow an opportunity for the public to be heard before the board takes official action on a proposition. The statute does not prohibit boards from maintaining orderly prom, conduct, as I was just saying. Um, this is why we always call for public comments in the beginning of the meeting and then usually after once the board has started beginning discussion to make sure that everyone has their voice heard. And there are criminal penalties such as civil action and suspension or removal from office. Next slide, please. Public records law, Florida Public Records Act from chapter one ninety-four of Florida statutes provides a right of access to records. Of state and local governments as well as private entities acting on their behalf. If a material falls within the definition of a public record, it must be disclosed to the public, which we just talked about a little while ago. The next slide's got more information on what public record means. I'll let you read it over at your leisure, but it's pretty much what we were just talking about. If it's in a written form. If it's in a written form, it can be a public record. Next slide, please, talks about providing public records. Public records cannot be withheld at the request of the sender, or quester is not required to show legitimate or non-commercial interest as condition of action. A request cannot be denied because it's over broad, unless authorized by another statute, agency may not require that the public records be requested in writing or the quester to identify themselves. That's talking about how public quester, records quester can be anonymous if they so choose. Currently, for the city of Palaca, our city attorney is our um, records management liaison. And the next slide talks about providing a public record, and this is kinda some, some of the things that the records, records management liaison must adhere to. Then the next slide, if you would, Linda, talks about fees. The only real fees that someone can, can charge to for a public records is the actual cost of duplication. Um, and a reasonable charge for expensive labor. Next slide talks about retention of those public records. Here at the city of Palaca, like other government municipalities, we do um, follow the Florida records retention schedule. Next slide, please, Linda. Um, and then the next slide shows penalties for non-compliance with the public records law. And then the next slide, if you would, Linda, provides some, some additional resources. The office of the attorney general um, has plenty of resources on what public records are. The First Amendment Foundation also provides um, a writ, written and electronic copies of, of the sunshine law. That concludes that part of my presentation. Do I have any comments?
The Form eight B, you say, you were gonna say something about that?
Yes, yes, sir, I was. The Form eight B, in the beginning of your normal agenda, we call for ex parte disclosures. It's before any case is being held, reheard. It's a time that the chair asks the board that if there are any ex parte disclosures, whether it be verbal, whether it be written, be disclosed to the board at that time. That way, when the case is heard, there's no surprises, oh, by the way, I have this, I need to disclose. It's up there in the front of the, the meeting, everyone who's from the public is present and can hear that you have that ex parte disclosure. Once that has been disclosed, um, we ask that you fill out Form eight B as required by statute to document in writing what that ex parte. You know, communication was and why you're abstaining from your vote. Yes. Um, and I would file it, um, the clerk files it with the minutes of proceeding.
Any questions? Ms. Krantz? We'll move on then to section three IV.
Yes, sir, this next, this next section is also mine. This is talking about the statement of financial interest, which every planning board member must, must prepare and send to the local supervisors of elections. Typically, the first statement of financial interest, Form one, that you will. Fill out is done within thirty days of taking office, and it's done for the year prior to when you begin your board election. Every year, the supervisor of elections will contact you to fill out your form, and then when your, either your term is up and you choose to no longer. Seek another term, or if, you know. For whatever reason, you're no longer on the board, within sixty days of not being on the board, you're required to fill out what's called the one F form. Which is your, your statement of financial interest for that year up until the point that you left the board. The only thing that I would point out is if you leave the board on December thirty-first, you actually would end up filling out two forms for that year. You would fill out the form that they would send you in July, because if you were on the board as of December thirty-first, you have to fill out that year's form, as well as your one F form. But that's one day. It does happen, but if you left on that one day. Any questions regarding? Forms, statement of financial interest? Or the Form eight B? All right, thank you, guys. I appreciate the opportunity.
While Ms. Krantz is standing there. Do any of the board have any, or Lisa too? Do y'all, does anybody have any questions about anything that's been asked or done tonight? This afternoon? Of staff? None?
Try to speak to the criteria that we have listed in the zoning code. That's the main point.
Right. Yeah, well, you know, like I said, I asked you before, you know, about keeping it, keeping me in line. That's important.
Are you sure you wanna ask me to do that?
Well, when you're putting the presentation on, yes, ma'am, I do. You're, you just don't know what, what I'm asking you to handle. With, okay, thank you very much, staff. That was very informative.
We, we appreciate each one of you for everything you do for the city. It's sincerely appreciated.
Okay, is there any other questions or anything anybody would like to say at this point in time? Sunny? Which other, when you tell me? Some of us got a notebook, some of us got a little certificate, some of. Some people got recognized. I got a big, I got a municipal code book. Yeah, mine is huge.
They rented the Mahon House for some of us. We had a huge get-together buffet. Oh, it's awesome.
She's stirring, Eddie, she's stirring. All right, with that being said, can I have a motion to adjourn? So move to second. Meeting adjourned, but I can't talk now, meeting adjourned. Thank you for your participation.